We'll call this meeting to order. This is Board of Selectmen on April 26th, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin as we always do with public audience. And there's two ways to participate in this virtual world we're in. You can send an email to our town clerk, to have your email read, or you can join us in person by emailing Tom Fitzgerald ahead of time, in order to get the link to our Zoom meeting. I know we have a couple of guests who are here with us and a couple of emails that we received. And I'll begin with the emails. The first comes from Shannon Knoll. Dear Simsberry Zoning and Planning Commissioners and Board of Selectmen, I'm writing to advocate for two initiatives. The first, a revision of Simsberry zoning regulations to allow for 1,000 square foot ADUs without approval of the zoning commission. And second, the establishment of an equity in housing task force to examine current housing practices, identify points of issue, and create a plan to address equitable housing issues. These measures will not completely address exclusionary practices or inequity in Simsberry, but they are actionable and sensible first steps towards that mission. Additionally, this goal will not be achieved in one cell swoop, but will take strategic and methodical planning and execution over time. As a coalition focused on equity in housing, CINCO has identified zoning codes around accessory dwelling units, ADUs, as a way in which we can bring about direct change immediately and begin to address an affordable and environmentally sound solution to housing market demand with regard to racial and intergenerational equity, disability, inclusion, and accessibility. Per Simsberry zoning code, ADUs can be 600 square feet and must share a common wall with an existing residence. ADUs which seek different parameters must be brought by the zoning commission for review and approval. ADUs are housed on single-family lots and are typically fairly expensive to build, averaging $40,000 to $50,000, depending on location. So narratives claiming that unseemly freestanding structures will pop up in illogical locations around Simsberry are likely exaggeration and perhaps intended to spread fear of urban spread. I'm specifically writing in support of ADUs in regard to the I/DD and DD intellectually developmentally disabled community. First, disabled Connecticut residents only receive $921 a month in SSI supplemental security income. This is not enough to live in any county within Connecticut and particularly not doable within Hartford County or Simsberry. Second, ADUs are a popular option for housing adults with I/DD as they foster respectful and independent living within the safety net of parents or caregivers. Under current zoning regulations, if the parent of a disabled adult has a detached garage that they would like to convert to an ADU, they must be granted permission by the zoning commission. As a property owner, I find it insulting to have to ask permission for my child, disabled or otherwise, to live on my property. As a member of CINCO, Simsberry Inclusive Neighborhood Development Coalition, I'm very passionate about creating and fostering a diverse, inclusive, and accessible community for the present and future residents of Simsberry. Attaining that goal is not relegated to one specific person, legislative body, or organization, nor can it be achieved in silos. It needs a community commitment and effort. Signed, Shannon Knoll. I have asked Wendy to read the next letter.
Thank you. At the April 7, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting, my comments to be read aloud at the public audience section were not forwarded. Only after I texted Sean Askam, Deputy First Selectman, about the omission and accompanying emails were my comments read in another timeframe. All my comments are sent to the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager Maria Capriola, where it is alleged that Town Manager Maria Capriola can subvert the process of transparent government by controlling the narrative, which is an abuse of power. The picture attachment I included in my submissions are not forwarded and not shown at public audience, although the pictures are depicting pictures taken on town grounds. Now it appears my written comments are not forwarded to the Board of Selectmen allegedly by Town Manager Maria Capriola as I get a confirmation from the town clerk. Susan Messino, President of The Grange, was given center stage with her comments at public audience that the Board of Finance abused their power and violated the public trust by not forwarding the Meadowwood acquisition to a vote, although the Board of Finance has the ultimate vote on what is forwarded to the referendum. Susan's comments met the narrative of favorability with a myopic view of the acquisition, dismissing the total financial impact to the town. During the discussion on the Meadowwood acquisition, First Selectman Eric Wellman was completely unprofessional in his comments stating that he would use his time and bully pulpit to support the effort to gather signatures. This appears to be an ethical violation as he stepped over the line and violated the Board of Selectmen policy on not commenting on comments made during public audience. What a hypocrite. Deputy Selectman Sean Askam chastised the Board of Finance for not placing the Meadowwood acquisition on the referendum for a vote as a priority-one expenditure, although the Board of Selectmen has cut priority expenditures in the past. The Board of Finance is the ultimate budget authority with the appropriate checks and balances on the spending of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education budgets. During First Selectment Tandy's administration in 1991, I tried to circulate a petition to bring the budget to a referendum for a vote. While collecting signatures at the town dump where Simsberry citizens gathered to rid of their trash, I was arrested by the Simsberry police, handcuffed, taken to the police department, fingerprinted, and had a mugshot taken, number 3816. There is a picture. At that time, forcing a referendum vote on the budget had severe consequences. The case was nullified, and Dill versus Co. became a precedent-setting lawsuit. It was written up in the New England Law Journal. I received $1 from the court for winning the lawsuit. USA Today highlighted the case. My attorney was John Schoenhorn. Not one person on the Board of Selectmen came to my defense. At the April 12, 2021 meeting of the Police Commission, I had my comments at public audience read aloud. Commissioner Mike Long took exception to my comments that were televised, so he decided to suspend public audience at the commission meetings. It is interesting to note that Mike Long convinced all the commissioners, Chairman Jennifer Caulfield, Tanisha Grant, Travis Schweitzer, and Terry Fogarty to go along with his punitive actions. The Police Commission was appointed under the Town Charter in 1993 and has had public audience on their agenda until the commissioners' unanimous vote to suspend public audience. If Mike Long can convince the Police Commissioners to suspend public audience, I can ask at the next charter revision to return the duties of the Police Commission to the Board of Selectmen. I am asking that the Board of Selectmen remove Mike Long from the Police Commission as he has subverted the public's First Amendment rights to address their concerns in a public forum. Commissioner Mike Long, along with other commissioners, were appointed to serve the community and oversee the police department as a result of their actions. They too should be removed from serving the public. Recently, Town Manager Maria Capriola made substantive changes to the vacation policy for town employees, including the police department. Many of the affected employees were in a union. These changes in the working conditions should have been negotiated with the union as it is a failure to bargain the changes. As a result of the changes to the vacation policy, it is alleged that the Simsberry Police Union filed a complaint under the Municipal Employee Relations Act, which governs a collective bargaining relationship between a municipal employer and a union. I will be voting no on the Meadowwood acquisition and the Latimer Lane School. All the comments and mugshot picture will be posted on Simsberry Patch Twitter at Joan Cohen Facebook.
Okay, thank you. I'll recognize next Rob Pomeroy. Hi, Rob.
Good evening. My name's Rob Pomeroy. I live at 9 Schoolhouse Lane. I'm also the chairman of the Board of Finance for the town of Simsberry. I'm here this evening to speak to issues arising from the interaction between the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen over the Meadowwood proposal. These issues of communication and process are usually handled by the members of these two boards among individuals or confined to the meetings of the boards. Unfortunately, the dialogue regarding Meadowwood has spilled over to the townspeople, social media, and the press. What I hope to accomplish tonight is not to reopen the wounds, but to work towards a more productive dialogue and process that strengthens the working of town government rather than tear it down. As I said at the beginning of the public hearing on the budget, we are three boards working cooperatively to serve the town and our shared stakeholders, the citizens, taxpayers, voters, students, employees, and residents of Simsberry. Working cooperatively does not mean that we always agree on everything. Each board approaches the challenges faced by the town from a different perspective. Each board proposes budgets and capital based upon their best idea of what is good for the town from their perspective. The Board of Finance's perspective is that of long-term stability for the town, affordability, and fiscal responsibility. There's a reason that the term for the elected members of the Board of Finance is six years and that those terms overlap. This reinforces taking the long view and reduces the impact of a two-year election cycle like that of other boards. When our boards disagree on a proposal, we need to work to find compromise or resolve our differences in a way that leads to a positive outcome. With Meadowwood, the process did not accomplish that before that resolution, before the Board of Finance vote on April 6th, and as a result, alternative processes kicked in. The petition drive and now scheduled referendum on the Meadowwood proposal is an example of an alternative process that works rather than a system that is broken. In making its decision not to forward the Meadowwood proposal to referendum at its April 6 meeting, the Board of Finance considered the impact of a rapidly increasing debt burden on the town over the upcoming five years from a long list of capital projects identified by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education. While the impact in the next two years is relatively nominal from the current capital projects of Meadowwood and the Latimer Lane renovate as new project, within the five-year projection, the bonding from these projects and others pushes the debt service above the Board of Finance's previous policy cap of 7%. As a result, the Board of Finance needed to approve a policy change to a range of up to 8% for debt service and allow 20-year bonding for the Latimer Lane project. In addition, the Board of Finance has needed to increase the annual pension expense to fund the responsibility the town has to its employees for their retirement pensions and other post-employment benefits. We have delayed this increased expense for too long and again needed to amend the amortization term and adopt a phased increase to accomplish what is needed to get back on track to fund this obligation. And finally, despite our original guidance to curtail expenses and also in spite of an unexpected jump in the grant list, we were still presented with an operating budget that required an increase in taxes. It was with this backdrop that the Board of Finance declined to advance the Meadowwood project to referendum. The reaction of the Board of Finance's decision was obviously and understandably disappointing for the Board of Selectmen and for the advocates of the Meadowwood project. For the most part, what has transpired for the town since that decision has been positive in the actions of the petition drive, grassroots support, and now the reality of the referendum. What is not positive, in my opinion, is the rhetoric surrounding the role of the Board of Finance. Our actions were demonized in a way that is not consistent with our role in town government or respectful of the dedicated service that our board and its members have given to this town. And I'm most concerned about the rhetoric that came from this board's meeting the night after the public hearing. Words matter. What you say on public TV, in social media, and in the press matters. Please be careful what you say. It influences how people think. For my part and the Board of Finance, I recognize that the same can be said from time to time for things said at our meetings. I denounce any personal or derogatory comments as well and try to support respectful attitudes toward our fellow volunteers. The members of the Board of Finance have collectively over 50 years of service to this town in various boards and volunteer jobs, and we're deserving of the respect for that service. So how do we proceed? The old saying is, "Time heals all wounds." Well, that's not exactly correct. If left untreated, time may heal the wound but leave an ugly scar. With treatment, perhaps the lasting scar cannot be an ugly reminder of pain, but one of lessons learned. So I propose a couple of treatments to help with the healing and better our process and improve cooperation among our boards. First, I recommend that we retool the tri-board meeting in late fall to kick off the budget season. This has become too much of a Board of Finance meeting where we outline what we need the Board of Finance, obviously the Board of Selectmen, and Board of Education to do. This fall, I propose that the Board of Selectmen and Board of Education outline to the Board of Finance your budget needs and priorities, and we will listen. We will add our objectives consistent with our policies like funding the pension and OPEB obligations, debt service policy caps, use of reserves, and target fund levels. And then we will work together toward a budget that meets those needs through give and take. Second, I propose that we create a working group on capital that would include members from the Board of Education, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, the Town Manager, the Director of Finance, and Superintendent of Schools. That working group would begin work on the 2223 capital budget this summer with a goal of a capital plan by December of this year. Moving capital out of the same timeline as the operating budget process will allow everyone to focus on it more closely and correct some of the problems we have seen in the past years where it becomes an afterthought. Capital plans are by nature long-term, and the projects do not necessarily require an understanding of how the current year will play out. Those are my proposals. Thank you for listening. Let us all commit to doing a better job going forward.
Thank you, Rob. This is obviously not the forum where we respond to those suggestions, but I look forward to having that conversation with the Board of Finance so we can move forward productively.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize next Kevin Kurian. Hi, Kevin.
Hi, First Selectman Wellman. Hi, Deputy First Selectman Askam, Town Manager Capriola, and all of our other wonderful public officials. My name is Kevin Kurian. I'm a college student living in this town as well as a member of the Simsberry Inclusive Neighborhood Development Coalition, a group of residents who want to increase housing access and affordability within our town. On the state and local level, there is much discourse about what our communities can do to foster diversity, equity, and inclusion. CINCO believes that we've found an area where our town government could possibly lead in, taking a vital first step in housing affordability for Simsberry. That first step, I believe, is legalizing detached accessory dwelling units and increasing the maximum size to 1,000 square feet as well as zoning ADUs, as right as Shannon Knoll mentioned previously. These ADUs will help meet a really prevalent market need among the young and old alike for easily accessible housing. Simsberry senior citizens who want to downsize but also want to stay in town often do not have the choice to do so. Simsberry's young people, like myself, who are interested in coming back to town after college, similarly do not always have the opportunity to do so because of the lack of diversity in our housing stock. ADUs meet a market demand for two critical types of residents that ought to feel more welcome in our community as well as members of the I/DD community. The fact of the matter is that young people cannot always afford a single-family home right out of high school or college graduation. Fully legalizing ADUs will create missing middle housing that allows young people and people from all backgrounds to be a part of our community by living in a type of housing that was previously inaccessible. I am specifically asking the Board of Selectmen to send a letter to the Town Zoning Commission, asking the group to fully legalize ADUs by permitting detached units as well as increasing the maximum size to 1,000 square feet. This used to be town policy in the past, but was later changed. By fully legalizing ADUs, we will be leading the state on this issue and showing what local governments can do by themselves to increase affordability. It is a vital first step that will bring numerous benefits to our town. Additionally, I also concur with those who have asked for a task force to be created in order to examine what we can do to make Simsberry's land use and zoning regulations more inclusive. This task force should also have the ability to make policy recommendations so that we can right some of the wrongs that we have with regard to affordability. Thank you for hearing my public comment. Thank you for convening this meeting today. Wishing you guys all the best.
Thank you, Kevin. This will be a good segue into a conversation we're going to have shortly with Spirit. Thanks for being with us tonight. Is there anyone else who was joining us for public audience tonight? Okay. And we'll move on to our first presentation. First, it's a presentation from Aquarian on the status of a project to upgrade their water treatment facility in Simsberry. And I'll introduce Michael Hiltz and Alan Wells. Hi.
Hi. Now, my name's Mike Hiltz. I'm the manager of capital delivery at Aquarian Water Company. I want to first thank Maria Capriola and the Board of Selectmen for allowing us to use this forum to communicate to the public, your constituents, about our capital project that we're, Aquarian, is currently constructing or reconstructing at our property that is adjacent to the Stratton Brook State Park. This project that we are working on is one of many capital projects that we are working on this year in Simsberry. And this particular project will improve water quality in Simsberry. It improves the reliability of our infrastructure and serving potable water to the community, and it addresses safety and, you know, safety as far as worker safety and chemical handling safety. So I know we have a short window of opportunity to do this presentation, so I want to turn it over to our project manager from Tainbon, Al Wells.
Thank you, Mike. How's my volume? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Perfect. Thanks, Eric. I guess you're advancing the slides, so we can move ahead to the next slide, please. So this is just the agenda. Mike's already given the introduction, and then what we'd like to do is focus more on Stratton Brook. That's what we're really here to talk about tonight relative to how Aquarian accesses that treatment facility. So we'll talk about the existing access drive that's been used historically, I think dating back to the Village Water Company, and the new proposed access drive. And I'll give you details on both, and then we'll talk about schedule and then open it up for Q and A. But I can give you just a real big picture here in terms of, as you know, I think we came before the board probably about two years ago or in front of planning and zoning and inland wetlands. And I think, as you know, there's two water treatment plant upgrades going on concurrently. One is over at Eno Place on the north side of town. That is for wells 2 and 5A. And the other one is Stratton Brook for wells 1, 3, 4, and 6. And again, Mike mentioned it, but the goal here is to centralize treatment of all of these individual wells to one facility for each well cluster. Right now, all the wells are treated individually at each wellhouse, and it's just not the most reliable, efficient, and safe way to do it. Centralizing just allows it to be more efficient and reliable moving forward. The construction started back in June of last year, and the estimated completion date we're still on target for March of 2022. So we can move ahead. So the Stratton Brook Treatment Plant site is, of course, sort of in the middle of the Stratton Brook State Forest or State Park. And you can see it really. If you take the Stratton Brook Trail, you'll see it. Or even as you drive into the Stratton Brook State Park, you'll see it from that access road. Again, this facility, the goal here is to treat four wells. So if you've been there, you'll see that we're constructing a new building to do just that. The existing, or the facility when completed will treat approximately 3.3 MGD, million gallons a day, of drinking water from each of those wells. And if you move to the next slide, you'll see how access is currently obtained to that site. Oh, sorry. These are the four individual wells that feed the Stratton Brook site, well 1 being Downways on Town Forest Road, wells 4, 6, and 3 being central right to the treatment facility itself. Now, if we move ahead, you'll see how access works currently. So currently and historically, the access has always been on the Stratton Brook State Park Trail, which is obviously, you know, a conflict of use between folks who recreate on that trail and the Aquarian Water Company as they access that facility with their pickup trucks and deliveries of water treatment chemicals. So our original proposal was to widen this trail and separate it with a fence so we could have safe access for Aquarian and the safe use of the trail by folks who use the state park and use the trail for biking. And we had brought that to the town, and then we brought that to the state. And in a lot of collaboration with the state, they ultimately asked Aquarian if they would consider finding an alternate access and just staying off that trail and leaving it just for the use of the folks who recreate in the park and use the trail. There'll always be an easement there because there's utilities there, but the idea is access to the site. If we could come up with an alternate means, that was what the state really wanted. So we looked to the north at another easement that Aquarian has through the state park. So if you go to the next slide, it'll show you the location of that. So we looked at a few variations, but this one was most favorable, first of all, because there's already property, a property easement there. This is where a water main exits the site and goes on to Farms Village Road. So that became the most favorable location because of property reasons, and it's already partially cleared because the water main is there. So this drive is approximately 1,500 feet long. It's a little longer than the existing access to the site by about, I'd estimate, by 500 feet or so. But it's clearly off any trail. It's a, as I mentioned, it's a partially cleared wooded area where a water main currently is. The drive would be 12 feet wide, and there's approximately 72 trees greater than 8 inch in diameter that need to be cleared within the existing easement and even outside the easement. I think the breakdown is 43 trees in the easement and 29 trees outside the easement. And we will be replacing the water main that is there now as part of this work. That needed to be done regardless. So again, it just made sense since the area was being disturbed to turn that into the new access drive. And once complete, this will allow Aquarian to stop using on any regular basis their existing access to the Stratton Brook site. All regular traffic to that treatment plant site would be on this new road, including deliveries of water treatment chemicals. We can go to the next slide. So in terms of schedule, if the state gives us final approval, we can start this work fairly soon. We're hoping to get that in the next few weeks so we can start the work in June and hopefully finish it up in August in terms of the clearing and the installation of the water main and putting down the gravel drive. And I think, as you know, currently the existing access drive, we've been shutting that down temporarily to do some work there. We've got a more prolonged shutdown scheduled now, which was to start today and continue through June 4th. And this is just for the installation of an electrical and a communication duct bank on that trail. There'll be a few more closures, but they wouldn't happen until after the new access drive was constructed. So I guess in conclusion, we definitely feel working with the state, this is a much better solution in terms of separating Aquarian's use of their existing access road from the Stratton Brook Trail. This allows a way for Aquarian to access the site without disturbing users of that trail. And like I mentioned, it's taking advantage of the fact that they're already, And like I mentioned, it's taking advantage of the fact that they're already, Aquarian needs to install a water main there already. So it's really just clearing the trees that would have needed to have been cleared and then putting down a gravel drive on top of that with some grading, just to accommodate the the traffic that'll be on it. In terms of traffic, it's just the daily in and out of pickup trucks. I would say about three times a day, morning, midday, and then at the end of the day to maintain and operate the facility. And then once, about once every month and a half, there'll be a water treatment chemical delivery of sodium hypochlorite or disinfection. Currently, that happens more frequently because they have to bring it in in smaller quantities. But now it'll be bulk storage there, so it would only be once every month and a half, and that'll be during the highest demand times of the year. As water demand decreases, the delivery frequency would decrease as well. So I'd say during the course of the year, you're probably looking at eight or nine deliveries of of the sodium hypochlorite. They do use a corrosion inhibitor as well, zinc orthophosphate, but that is stored. It it's it's a pretty small amount, so they can store one year's worth at the new site. So that would only be a once a year delivery of that corrosion inhibitor. So that's what we had planned to talk to you about tonight. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Other questions from members of the board?
I have a question, or two questions, actually, if it's okay. So looking at the map, and I'm sure there's a reason for it. You're going through your easement, but if you look at the park, there's the driveway into the park that kind of loops around, and it looks like that would come a lot closer to where this is all all the construction's happening. And I was just wondering why there wasn't thought given to going through the park rather than taking down all the trees off the easement, because it's an existing pathway.
Right. There's a difference in elevation there that was going to be kind of difficult when you when you come into the park. You'll see you're up quite a bit higher than the site. So there was going to be some problems with that, but the real reason was it's very difficult getting easements from the state. So if we could just utilize the easement we had in terms of of property acquisition, that was what the state recommended.
Okay, just if, like I said, looking at that map, it just didn't make sense to build that long drag through there because it ends up so close. That was my first thought. And then the other question I have is the impact to the neighbors on Whitney, which is the street over from where the the road's going to be and the the stuff coming in and out. And how so that's and is that as close as the other easement is to, I think it's Pondside? You know, how close are you to Whitney on that easement?
Yeah, we're about 1,000 feet away from Whitney. It's actually a much better location for an access drive. I mean, Farms Village Road, as you know, is real straight, and it's fairly level, so the sightlines are excellent. We do need to get permission from the state, it's a state road, for that exact reason, to make sure that the sightlines are adequate, but they will be. It's much better than the Stratton Brook entrance. I mean, you can kind of think about as you're heading north on Stratton Brook, it's it's a little bit of a blind turn, and it's downhill and uphill. I know just crossing that crosswalk at Stratton Brook, going to use the trail, you've got to really have your eyes peeled for traffic there. Whereas Farms Village Road is is, you know, your line of sight is much better. And distance wise, I I it's got to be great, or I couldn't tell you, I just without measuring, but
Okay, yeah, my only my only pro, the only thing I don't like is a whole logistics of how close the current park driveway is, and then taking down of all the trees off the path.
I think if you, Wendy, if you go there, the the there are current, there are current residents who are who are a third of the distance to the current access point than anybody would be on Whitney. So so you're actually alleviating proximity to residents if that's part of the conversation by going to this location. I agree with you, that location is horrible to pull out of when people come flying down through Stratton Brook. I mean, it's, you gotta hustle to get across that that crosswalk, so a big slow truck. And the fact that it's intermingled with pedestrians, or I guess we're probably talking very rarely at best anyways that trucks are going out there. But I think moving it to a alternative quiet, less used, less impactful area is is a more of an ideal solution, so.
There are other questions?
Eric, I have one more, partly a comment. The old driveway, if you will, that they're currently using, that they're going to abandon is actually an old railroad bed from many, many years ago that actually went from the center of town all the way over to Canton. But it was designed as a railroad bed, not as a road. And I wouldn't want to be on that road, if you will, when even a pickup goes by, let alone a big truck. And the road off of Farms Village is much better. They can widen it. It is 1,000 feet away, which, as Chris pointed out, is much farther away than either the houses as you face the road to the left or also to Pondside, which are the other side of the stream. So I I think it's a big improvement, and Aquarian's willing to to do the work. It's, there's pretty good logic to it, so I like seeing that.
Any other questions?
Little little known fact, since Mike brings it up, that rail line that goes over and goes up and over into Canton, hence Tooten Hills. People, right? That's where that comes from. People don't understand where that name comes from.
You're not just a good looking guy, Chris, you're smart.
Hey, I read that.
You've exhausted your time limit, Senator.
Thank you for this lesson. This is great. Thanks for being here tonight, gentlemen.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a second presentation tonight, this one from the Spirit Council. Spirit Council serves as our D E I Diversity Equity Inclusion Champions. And I've asked them to present on their work quarterly so that we can keep the momentum and keep this board engaged in that work. So with that, I'll turn it over to their chairs, Cheryl Cook, Nicole Kodak, and Tanisha Graham.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Thanks for having us. We're very happy to be here. As you all know, we are a very busy committee, and we have a lot of stuff to cover tonight. So Nicole is going to start us off tonight.
Yes, yes, we're going to share just our update on what we've been doing since our January update with you, and then also talk to you about how we are positioning the work to support the resolution on declaring racism a public health crisis. So the Let's Talk events are continuing on strong with a lot of momentum. In February, we had the Let's Talk Housing, you remember? That was quite animated and well attended, and it's it's a topic that we'll probably bring up later on under the resolution support. We had the February 25th, we had a Driving While Black Author Talk with the Public Library that was that they hosted and we co-hosted, and Gretchen Soren is the author of Driving While Black. She's also the author, it's the book that the PBS documentary was based on, and she was exceptional. She's quite a woman, and the story is powerful. In March, we had Women's History Month, and we had a conversation about COVID impact on women in the workplace with three panelists, including a local business owner who is also a resident, an executive director of the Horizons Program, Ethel Walker, and founder and chairwoman of On Tap Potential, which is returning women to the work after leaving for caring for family. So that was in March. And April, we had the Arab American Voices Conversation, dispelling stereotypes and recognizing contributions. We had three panelists, including a recent Simsbury High School grad, the Farmington Valley American Muslim Center Imam, who is fabulous at interfaith conversations, and the Coordinator of Muslim Life at Trinity College. And in May, we we are hosting the, in May 6th, this is our next one, the Asian American Conversation on Stopping AAPI Hate, which continues to be an issue that is spiking. We have an incredible panel, again, it's just very humbling. Attorney General Tong is going to join us, James Chen, local business owner, Mel Kawakami, who is Japanese American, he was the pastor of a church in Newtown when the shootings happened in Sandy Hook. And his, he's a descendant of parents and uncles that were in Japanese internment camps. So he's got an incredible perspective as well. We also have an educator from Krec, Enkogir Yang, and then two Simsbury High seniors. So that's going to be another great conversation. So please join anytime you can, they're really enriching, and help us understand the variety within this community that already does exist. We also want to share a celebration that the Connecticut Library Association awarded the Simsbury Public Library the winner of this year's Excellence in Public Library Service for a town greater than 15,000 residents award for partnership in the Let's Talk series. So I'm sure Lisa Kareem will give you an update on there as well, but we've worked very closely with them. They've been critical, and it's a great recognition. We were happy to support that. Lastly, on events, we will be speaking, we, again, we are continuing to meet with Missy DiNuno and the Simsbury Performing Arts Center for partnership in the September Feast event, the the relaunched September Fest. We are having conversations, have another one planned this week on how Spirit can support it to be a multicultural event for our residents. So we're really excited to collaborate on that.
Thank you, Nicole.
Let's turn it to outreach, and then Cheryl, you can update us on that.
Absolutely. So our outreach subcommittee continues to, we're like a traveling roadshow, as some people call us. Since the last time we met, we have talked to the Bike Ped Group here in town. We had a great conversation about ways that the bike pedestrian group could host events that might be geared towards sort of intertown activities, particularly maybe with Bloomfield because of the new bike trail that's going to be hooking our two communities together. And so we look forward to having a conversation with Bloomfield, and we have reached out to them, so we are looking forward to that. And our Bike Ped Group is very excited to be involved in that. On April 30th, the end of this week, Kristen has arranged for us to meet with the diversity group from the town of Farmington. So we will be meeting with them to discuss their efforts on D E I issues and how we might collaborate between the two towns, perhaps share experiences and possibly activities down the road. On May 10th, we will be appearing before the Police Commission. We do have our own police commissioner here in Tanisha Grant, and I'm going to try to talk fast so that she can get to that meeting at seven. But so we are are very much looking forward to doing our presentation for the Police Commission and having a conversation with them about their perspective on criminal justice and the work that we're doing and how we might collaborate on any initiatives that that we can be supportive of, you know, in their department. Then on May 25th, we are appearing with the Board of Education. That will also be an outreach event to discuss ways that both the Spirit Council and the Equity Council can work together with work that's going on in the schools and work that's going on in the town. As as you all know, they are our education partner in this work and have their own council within the Board of Education, and this is an effort to sort of update each other on the on the work that we're doing. On May 27th, we will be appearing before the Town of Easton Diversity Group. So they asked us quite some time ago to help them, you know, and formulate their diversity activities, so we are happy to do that. In, I think it was March or April, we had an informal discussion with a group in Glastonbury called TALK. They are, they are not a town committee, but they were interested in trying to form a town committee and were looking to us to for some advice and some some insights on on how that's working for us. So that's really where we are on outreach. We continue to add events to our list, and we are available for, you know, bar mitzvahs, birthdays now. I'm going to turn it over to Tanisha.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to send a quick report on what the Data Subcommittee has been working on this past quarter. So we are currently in the process of finalizing the contract with Data Haven and Health Equity Solutions. Once we get everything finalized, we'll be giving you guys more information about that, and then also to talk about ways that we're going to work with them in the future as well. Another thing that we have, the Spirit Council has been working tirelessly on, has been to support the the resolution that was adopted in September. And some of the four, the key points that we have been intentional on focusing on have been criminal justice. And as Cheryl has said, I'm I'm part of the Police Commission. So we have invited the Spirit Council to come in and do a brief presentation and then so we could figure out ways of how we can intertwine both groups together. Then we have the education point that was a part of the resolution, and we, where Equity Council is part of that. So Sue and three members that are on the Spirit Council are also a part of that. So those, that's another area that we've been intentional on doing the work. As you can see from from future, from past meetings, the Health, the Equity Council has been hosting different events at the at the high school in town. Another area of focus in terms of the resolution has been food security, and that's an area where Kristen has been taken care of and along with Cheryl as well. And then, of course, because Cheryl's in everything. And then we have the Health, the Health Point, which is pretty much declaring racism a public health crisis. We have, Brush has been very formidable in that. He is our Farmington Valley Health District Liaison. So it's just, everything has been moving real, real fast. We've been doing a lot of work on this this, since we've been formalized as a town committee. And then there's this other piece that we'll talk about that that we haven't really touched base on in terms of like the housing piece, which is a part of the resolution. And I would, I know that they brought it up at the last Spirit meeting, but I was away at the time, and I wasn't able to attend, unfortunately. And so I think Cheryl and both Cheryl and Nicole were there, so they can, they're going to talk to you a little bit more about that.
Thanks, Tanisha. If I don't get to say goodbye, don't, when you leave us. But so on the housing issue, as Nicole mentioned earlier, you know, we did have a housing forum in February. It was attended by 100 people and generated a lot of conversation. Since then, we have been, you know, discussing how Spirit Council can be involved in this issue. We haven't had any formal structure within our committee to do that. However, Nicole and I and some other members of Data and other committees have been attending meetings of other housing organizations. I think you heard from two members of SinCo in your public audience tonight. We have talked to both of them. Also, the First Church of Christ here in town has a housing group, which is is working on ideas. The Housing Development Fund has been talking to them. There's the Greater Hartford Interfaith Action Alliance also working on housing. And we have just been trying to sort of gather information and and figure out what our role might be in this. And I think Eric, who's your, one of your liaisons to our committee, was at our last meeting. And the the question of whether or not to have a another subcommittee added to our our list to address housing came up, and Kristen rightly rightly pointed out that it is up to the Board of Selectmen to do that, that we do not have that decision-making power. So we bring that up tonight because you all may want to have a discussion on this. And Eric, you might want to comment on this.
Yeah, let me just elaborate a little bit. So the the request tonight is that we formalize what would be an additional work stream for the Spirit Council around housing. And I think the way that it's been described previously, which I liked, is it's not specific to affordable housing, but it's even broader. I think the term that I heard was inclusive housing. And I look at the various groups that have passion around this issue, whether it's SinCo, it's First Church, as you mentioned. I think that the Spirit Council has a unique role to play, you know, as the the formal town committee supporting this work to to take what some of the energy and ideas from these groups, run them through your expertise, your filter, your data collection. run them through your expertise, your filter, your data collection effort, and provide recommendations and structure around ideas that potentially this board could adopt from a policy perspective or land use boards could adopt that would be within their purview. So that's something that I would be supportive of forming and I wanted to see if there was more questions or other conversations from the Board of Selectmen tonight.
Eric, this is Sean. I guess a question and a thought. So I mean, our board doesn't have any formal role and is intentionally divided from zoning. So I just, I want to make sure that again, we set those expectations clearly that Connecticut general statute only has the Board of Selectmen involved in zoning in this town respects waiving zoning fees, right? So we can't change zoning laws or, or rules in the community. And then the other piece of it is, is I want to understand, you know, bigger picture, are we targeting smaller, quick hits or, I mean, are we looking at a plan that talks about the, the town financing and affordable housing development? Those are two different ends of the spectrum and I guess I just want to understand kind of which road we're charging down. Because obviously the, the second has some pretty substantial capital requirements and otherwise that haven't yet been contemplated, so.
Those are excellent questions, Sean. And I, I very much appreciate your bringing up the separation between the different elected boards, zoning being one of them. So I'm going to let Nicole talk a little bit about how we see our role and what you all have to think about.
So I, we've been wrestling with, as Eric puts the question, what are we solving for? What problem are we solving for? And we've been wrestling with the different scopes and the different strains of work and effort that are happening so that we can not duplicate effort in town groups, but collaborate and make some meaningful progress. We envisioned a housing, a spirit housing subcommittee, not affordable housing, just a housing subcommittee, inclusive housing could be fine, to support the resolution and build expertise on housing definitions, issues, options, resources, and to be the DEI lens on us becoming welcoming and inclusive for all. So what would we be solving? Questions like, why, why are not more people of color choosing to move to Simsbury? It's not just affordable housing. How can we become more welcoming and inclusive for all community members? Then we have heard a number of times brought up the idea of the Board of Selectmen maybe appointing a task force on affordable housing and that will be separate from us. Our thoughts are, if you, if you did that, we have made a connection with a Regional Plan Association who might provide a housing needs assessment like they did for Fairfield County. I'm still waiting for their cost estimate. They could do it just for the town of Simsbury for a very reduced price because now they've got all the data and the tables and the format set up. But it would be looking at, you know, including stakeholders in price points of homes and different types of homes within, in the town and a gap analysis of housing burden versus income with the housing stock that's available. And their problem that that in our heads, if you decided to do this, would be solving would be what are our housing needs for different price points of homes, like lower price points of homes. I wouldn't say low income housing, but this would include first-time home buyers, young adults, seniors who want to stay in town, new people who want to move to town. This would be a broader, very economic viewpoint and, and the way we've been thinking of it. So we sort of separated out the the DEI support of the resolution in housing and understanding it with our data work from the actual affordable housing economic lens. It was becoming a little bit, it was, it was not clear to us until we just sort of, sort of kind of found these two categories and said, these could be ways forward, so.
And then my only follow-up is of course, and I brought this up on the Housing Forum back in, in February, there was you know, some, some quick hit ideas thrown out there, but again, we're, we're constrained locally to how we raise revenues, right? And it's on property taxes. And the challenge from a pure fiscal standpoint is if you lower the value of what you tax, you're increasing or potentially increasing the burden on the higher valued or other values to make up for that, right? With the delivery of services, with the assumption that you know, services are divided equally amongst all constituents in town. So you know, another example, we've, we've often been told that an apartment costs a municipality one point one dollars compared to the tax revenue it brings in. So it's actually a net negative to have apartments in a, in a community from a pure cost standpoint. So from the service delivery model. So as we look at all this, I, I think we do need to look at the, the tax burden and the fiscal end too. Because we certainly need to, to solve a housing issue, but we also have to be able to, to raise the revenues to service the residents that are currently here and here in the future. And you know, and I don't know what those, those needs are, but you know, we saw something as simple as a new urgent care facility in the north end of town. And we had a, Cheryl, you remember this, right? We had a substantial call volume on ambulance. All of a sudden we had to fund a third ambulance. You know, so little things really do impact communities like ours in unforeseen ways sometimes. So just, you know, making sure that we also have the lens on the, on the tax side as well.
Well, one of the, the great things about us starting to look into these issues is that as we're learning about different types of housing stock and Eric sat in on one of these meetings with us, Simsbury has what we call NOAA housing, naturally occurring affordable housing. Housing that falls within the so-called affordable range. And part of, and one of the ideas that came up was this idea of matchmaking, of making those properties available to people with subsidized loans for down payments and closing costs and things like that. So it's properties we already have. They would be made available to people who might have, you know, more limited income, even though they are employed, you know, maybe a lower credit score than, than you would need for a regular thirty-year mortgage. And they would be matched with, with lenders and, you know, it's a way where there would be no deed restrictions. There was no, it's a way to, to open up, you know, our housing stock to people who might otherwise not have realized that they could afford a house in Simsbury. And to your point about, you know, services and things like, these are not new properties. These are properties that already exist. So, you know, it's just one of those ideas that we've been talking about and I, I only throw it out there is as an example, you know, of, of something that can happen. But you need to have, you know, a group of people who can sort of direct their attention to these, these issues. Why, I appreciate Shannon and Kevin on the ADUs, that it, that is part of the puzzle, you know, for young people, people with disabilities, things like that. And that is a zoning issue. And I, I appreciate the work that the Planning Commission and Bill Rice have done on their report. And all of those things are kind of, you know, bubbling to the surface. So as a part of your resolution, you know, it seemed like a next step to, to move towards having sort of a central focus or, and, and that's up to you, you know.
It makes sense. You know, I appreciate what you're saying. It makes a lot of sense.
I, I have a couple of comments. Just in general, I like, I have had a different vision for affordable housing or housing task force, starting back at the end of last year, when some of the members of First Church and SYNCO approached me to convey their ideas. And then in December, there was the meeting, you know, after we looked at the Affordable Housing Plan by planning, there was a small group that met and at that meeting, we passed along to Bill Rice and Planning a recommendation or an idea to bring to his board about creating a, a housing task force that they would agree to, to add that recommendation to their Affordable Housing Plan, which they owe the state and I think is going to come to us, which they did agree to do back in December. And I look at this as a bigger scope. I, I understand the lens of the Equity Group, but there's, it's, you know, it's a much broader picture across the town. There's elderly and we know there's disabled and there's young entry people coming into town. And I kind of, like, this is not my words, it's from people, the residents have, who have approached me on this, that we should have representation from multiple boards on this task force, including Spirit Council. So rather than a subcommittee under Spirit, Spirit would be on this greater committee along with, you know, potentially a Board of Ed rep or an Economic Development rep, Planning, Zoning, SYNCO, you know, whoever we decide, which is where we left it with Planning at the time. So I, I
We do not disagree with you, Wendy. That's why we're just putting it back to you because that is a Board of Selectmen decision, so.
Yeah, that's my, I was going to say, my only concern is if there's two, you know, two different groups, how does that work?
I, the way I look at this, Wendy, is that the Spirit Council could very well make a recommendation that such a task force would be, would be helpful. And they could, I think, play a role, certainly in playing a role on the task force, but also providing some ideas around scope and membership composition and what this task force would be tasked with. But I think you're absolutely right that it needs to be wider than the, the members of the Spirit Council themselves.
Absolutely, yeah.
Eric, this, this is Mike. I have been hearing about this for a while. I'm, I'm not quite sure how to frame this request. And, and I'm really uncomfortable because of all the players that this impacts, both our, all our land use commissions, the Board of Selectmen, Economic Development, everything else. I'm, I would be really uncomfortable, for instance, if you asked for us to vote on this tonight. I really want to see something more in writing because I could foresee misunderstandings over exactly what we've asked somebody to do, whether it's Spirit Council or someone else. I'd, I'd really like to see something a little more formal and, and maybe I'm just caring paranoid, but I want to make sure that we, everybody understands what we're asking them to do. I think it's a good idea. Don't, I'm not trying to be negative, but I don't want
That's a great point, Mike. And, you know, as we discussed this, you know, that was, as Nicole mentioned, we did, we reviewed the needs assessment that was done for Fairfield County and we attended some of those seminars on how that was done. It's very instructive and it is a state Department of Housing organization that did that. So you know, there's, there's a lot of housing issues going on statewide. So there is a lot of attention on this now. But there, you know, we're not looking to reinvent the wheel here. There, there is a framework out there now. And we are happy to share what we know and what we've seen and you know, we just want to help. And, you know, like I said, it's your decision to do that. The reason, you know, we thought having one of our sub, subcommittee devoted to this was that it doesn't, you know, distract from all of our other, you know, by just leaving it as a general thing, you know, we don't have a group of people that can just focus on that. Because as you just heard, you know, we have a lot of other things that we're working on too.
You got a couple of things going on.
Mike, I appreciate the suggestion. I just want to make sure I understand where you're coming from. The suggest, the specific request tonight is that we form a housing subcommittee as part of their, you know, rules of, I think it would be part of your rules of procedure. Mike, are you suggesting that you would want to better understand the scope of the subcommittee before moving forward with that? Or you would want to better understand, you know, the idea of actually forming a task force, which to me would be a whole nother level?
The, the task force would be a whole nother level and I would absolutely not want to see that happen without more, I'll call it, structure or more formality. I think if we're looking at housing, that very much gets into land use. And irregardless of whether people agree with it or not, that's not the Board of Selectmen's preview. We've got town staff that are much better at that and we have a, a number of state regulations that we do have to be in compliant with. So depending on how exactly the motion is structured, I, I guess I got to wait and see. And I didn't print out that whole section, so.
I don't think there's a motion in our package, is there?
There isn't, no.
Can we, can I just make one suggestion? And maybe if we had added to another agenda, I, I would like to know Cheryl and Nicole and Kristen, and you know, you guys, just the list of stuff you're doing and your reporting capabilities is, is amazing. It's like you, good project management skills there. I, I would love to see, get feedback from SYNCO, these groups that have really been championing a task force and see how they feel about the role of a subcommittee, if that covers a lot of the work that they're planning or they've envisioned doing, just that way that they have bought in and feel that they're being heard and, and that you'll help facilitate their eventual needs.
I, I can answer that because I, I am a member of SYNCO and so is Nicole. So we do meet with them on a regular basis and in fact, at our last meeting with SYNCO, we, we discussed the task force idea and they, they asked us essentially to, to bring that up to you and we're supportive of that. They also recognize that, you know, not, not being a town committee, you know, without having that, that town structure behind them, you know, that there's only so much that can happen there, but they are a very dedicated group of people. And as you heard, you know, we have Kevin and Shannon and, and a whole bunch of other people, very dedicated to this work. But it's my understanding from, from talking to them that they are very supportive of this.
Just a, a question there. So it, it felt like there's already a solution coming in terms of the ADU request. And, and I guess I missed the whole data collection, research, review the issue before we moved to solutions. So are, are we talking about just preconceived solutions that we're going to push through or are we talking truly about reviewing the issues and then coming together with what the community needs? And I'm not suggesting that the ADU issue isn't, isn't the right solution. I just, I, I'm not educated enough to understand if that's been through, you know, the review and that's the top of what our community needs or is that what a couple of people want? I don't understand, I guess.
Well, the ADU issue is part of SB ten twenty-four, you know, which is before the state legislature now. And that may be decided for us at the state level, but as you said, that, that is a zoning statute issue. And any local, you know, changes on that would have to come through zoning. So that one is, is not really something that we can, you know, work on because that's not our lens. However, we, we can support that. Through our DEI lens, we are supportive of having different forms of inclusive housing, you know, to support different types of residents in Simsbury. So in that way, we are, you know, we're supportive of, of those efforts, but you know, as you said, there is, there is a definite line between what we do as a Spirit Council and what the, the land use boards do. And it is being examined on the state level too. And those, you know, the data that I referred to is, is also happening on a statewide level. So that's what if we had a subcommittee, we would, you know, we would tap into that. We would work with that and, and, you know, we're hoping that because a lot of that work has already been done, as Nicole mentioned, there are, there was a whole study done for Fairfield County that they've been looking at doing one for Hootford County that we would obviously be a part of. So, you know, that's, that's where we are. I think we're more trying to find, you know, as Eric said at one point to us, you know, there may be low-hanging fruit, you know, there may be these things that we can do. You know, matchmaking programs, things like that, that, you know, we're, will just be a matter of recommending them to people who might need them. That's not really a town policy. These are already programs that are in place. You know, there are nonprofits that run them. We would essentially be providing information to people who might need it. They run things like, you know, housing bootcamp, you know, workshops for first-time homeowners and you know, people who might need that type of counseling. There's a whole range of things that can happen.
Yeah, that'll make sense to me. And again, we don't need, I mean, you don't need this body to do it other than as a, as a voice to give, you know, give, give light to the, the affairs. I guess what I'm talking about, Sherry, is you know, if we're going to fund, which I think you know, if we're going to fund, which I think what this, this sounds like, this sounds like the charrette process of 15 years ago, right? Where we're going to do a big study on the town and do the housing needs assessment and then you know, say this would be a good zone for this, this would be a good zone for that on top of, you know, all of the other programs. And, and then, you know, we work with developers and otherwise, because the reality is you need private money to change housing
Absolutely.
in a community, right? So, and again, maybe I'm, I'm, I'm oversimplifying it, but if we're getting, that to me is an interesting path. It's very informative, but that's an intense process of review and research and experts, et cetera. And again, I'm just, I'm wondering if, if that would be what the goal is, or again, if, if folks have already decided what the solutions are through their professional world or Google skills or otherwise. And then we're just looking to enact a bunch of changes. And I, that's what I'm just trying to understand here. Cause I've, you and I have seen enough task force, especially in election years, we all like to form task force, right? But, you know, there are most task force are where good ideas go to die. I, I would say Spirit is the exception to that rule. So this is an important issue and we, we should make sure that, that we, we make sure it doesn't die, that it continues to move forward. So.
Well, I think Nicole, do you want to jump in here?
I, I, I think we were thinking of two different levels of effort. The one was in our lane, the DEI, you know, data eye on, are we being seen as welcoming and inclusive and are our housing options that exist right now available for people to know about? And so that's not changing housing, that's just building some expertise and connecting parties. Outside of that, if you, if you chose, this is not a spirit thing, but if you chose to appoint a task force, there is a need, housing needs assessment model that could be enacted as a starting point. It's, it's data. It's not a charrette process. It's data on, you know, what is, I could, we could put in a, a link in the chat or send it to you guys, the, the Fairfield County one. You can break it out by town. It's very easy to use and digest. And that would be, I think, the starting part to inform what are the needs for different price point homes in our area? What are the, the needs that are met? What are the needs that are not being met? And so it's data, it's not a, I mean, then you, then the task force would take it and, and move it forward. And that would be really important to Mike's point, to have the town employees and, and the, the zoning party, the planning party, like all of the right people on that task force representation, perhaps from Spirit, Simcoe, et cetera. But that's separate and outside of our lane, but we were just, we had come across the Fairfield Housing Needs Assessment and the group that did it. And I'm in connection with them to just get a cost estimate of what it would be for Simsbury. No commitment, no, no obligation, because that would be something I would hand off. You know, to let you guys know what to do with. You guys would decide. But for the spirit part, I think we already have data funding coming. And that part of that work would be understanding, you know, the inclusivity welcoming part and sharing what we already have, not changing what we have yet.
What, thanks Nicole. What I'd like to do to move the conversation forward tonight is just recognize Maria to add a little bit of context about how staff may be able to provide some structure around this.
That's great. Thanks Eric. And thanks, it's nice to see everybody this evening and, and thanks to Spirit and, and all the work that you've been doing. You know, hearing the possibility about, you know, wanting to proceed perhaps with a proposal and also taking into account, you know, some of the, the thoughts that I think both Mike and Wendy shared. I wonder if it would make sense as a next step would be for Spirit to put together a proposal for the Board of Selectmen's consideration to sort of outline, you know, what specifically you're envisioning the, the subcommittee would work on, maybe some goals, objectives that you might have in mind. And then once that proposal comes to the Board of Selectmen, perhaps we could do a referral to planning zoning. If there are a few other stakeholders, you know, that you all feel are relevant, such as Simcoe or EDC. You all could kind of, you know, work on that, that list of referrals to get some feedback, since there is some potential, right, for overlap and collaboration opportunities. So kind of, you know, do your due diligence for referrals prior to making a decision on, on how to proceed and if to proceed. But again, I need to starting with a good proposal that you all can kind of have some time to digest and, and then kind of respond and react to and discuss.
Yeah. So I think that that's work that would have had to happen anyway. So if we were to approve the subcommittee tonight, I assume your next step would be to figure out what it is you're going to do as a subcommittee. Whereas Maria, what you're proposing is, is another path forward is let's figure out what they're going to do and put that proposal in front of us and then okay it. I would be okay with that approach. I hope that the folks on the Spirit Council don't see that as as us slowing the process down, but this is something that would have to take place in the process anyway in order to, to get to where we want to go. So I, I would be okay with that approach, but I wanted to open it up for feedback.
I think the only obstacle I see to that is that, you know, we, we have a subcommittee structure that we, we already work in. And by throwing these questions out to the 18 members of the steering committee to deal with, we're, we're essentially going to be creating some type of a subcommittee anyway, just to have that discussion. Because we only meet, you know, we meet once a month and there's 18 people who all have things to do and things to say. And the subcommittees allow us to do that deep focus on these issues. You know, as you heard, we, we, we've divided up the work. We, you know, we share the work. But, you know, there's a lot of work and it, it helps us to focus our, you know, our tasks and things like that. So while I, I don't disagree with you that we do need all of that information, I sort of see it flip flopped, you know, that we, we need the subcommittee first to do that, but only because I'm not sure how we would focus that. I mean, if we, if you tell us to do that, we're going to have to have somebody like who we would call the chair, the subcommittee, you know, who's going to have to organize that anyway. So.
Yeah, hear that. Maria, were you going to jump in?
Yeah, sure. So because it's such a large committee in terms of composition with 18 folks, I think if initially there were maybe, you know, two or three members who were, you know, just doing research, exchanging, you know, research, et cetera, some ideas, that that most likely would not constitute a meeting for the purposes of FOIA. If, you know, again, I think it's important probably if, you know, maybe you had two or three folks who are really interested, again, just generating some ideas, getting some thoughts on paper. You know, any sort of formal endorsement by Spirit would obviously need to happen by the larger Spirit Committee before that proposal, you know, comes forward. But again, I think because the, the, the size, the composition is so large, again, if it was just two to three folks, again, not taking action, you know, et cetera, and really just sort of doing research and exchanging some ideas. I don't think that that would likely constitute a meeting under FOIA. I can always certainly look into that more if it was needed.
Well, I, I, you know, I'm not trying to be argumentative here. I just think, to me, that sounds like a subcommittee. Cause that's
I mean, there's no danger in, in making the subcommittee, right?
I think if that will allow this proposal to get some, you know, meat on the bones, then I, I would be in favor of doing that.
Yeah.
I mean, we could call it whatever you want, but it still sounds like a subcommittee.
How about this? I'm going to propose a motion and see if folks support this. Would there be a motion to add a subcommittee of Spirit Council to focus on housing? Which would be tasked with, what I want to say is basically fleshing out, you know, what it is.
The scope and focus of housing issues in the community. Right? Is that what you're looking for?
I think that it adds transparency also, you know.
Eric, I made that motion that you suggested.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further conversation?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, I'd like to just say I'm all for all sorts of housing. But just because I've had so much public input from people about a task force and that the planning commission has discussed it, and you're saying it's separate, I would just like to know how these two would end up working together. And I don't know that right now, so I'm not ready to support a subcommittee until I understand where it's going to go and how it's going to work into the bigger picture as there are multiple towns that have specific groups, you know, that handle this. So that, that's where I'm coming from, right or wrong?
Typically, a, a member of this body, if they want a task force, they bring the structure, the scope, and they propose it with the rest of us. We have the economic development task force that Nancy, Nancy proposed, right, Mike? Sheri, you know, she came in with the people, the structure, the organization. So if, if somebody on this group of six of us wants to do a task force, we put in the work and we, we recommend it. So the, the fact that the public is talking about it is important, but they need one of us to sponsor it and bring it in here.
They, well, they, we did get it on the planning commission's affordable housing plan, which hasn't come to us yet to discuss.
So that's great.
It was, it was done.
It needs to be brought here. So, I mean, we have this body tonight that wants to do something. And if somebody else wants to put in the work to do it somewhere else, they most certainly can.
Okay, well, we can vote. Right?
Is there any other conversation before we vote? All in favor of forming a subcommittee?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
One, okay. The motion passes five to one. Was there anything else that Spirit wanted to share with us tonight?
I think we've probably done enough.
Thank you so much.
It's never boring when you're here Sheri, we appreciate it.
Just stirring the pot.
Denise, you, you gotta watch that one. She's involved in everything.
Yes, she's involved in everything.
Good luck with your next career there at Police Commission.
Denise is doing great work.
Right. We'll see you later.
All right. Thank you all.
All right.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Bye.
We will continue on with the, my first selectman's report. Hot off the press, I got an email from the governor's office just a couple of hours ago. That's starting tomorrow, April 27th. Some vaccination clinics will no longer be requiring appointments. There's a link that I'm going to be including in my report. You can find it on the state's vaccination portal to see the list of such clinics where you can walk in. I did see on the list that there are clinics in Bloomfield and West Hartford on the list. You can also go to ct.gov/covidvaccine to register through VAMS and the phone number 877-918-2224 to make an appointment by phone. The town's annual budget referendum is scheduled for Tuesday, May 4th. Please note that it's going to be at the Simsbury Public Library because of COVID protocols at the middle school. Polls are open from six in the morning to eight o'clock at night. The town's budget information is aggregated on the finance page of the town website. Residents will be voting on a significant capital project, a renovation of Latimer Lane Elementary School. You can learn more about that project on the Board of Ed's site. Voters will also have the opportunity to decide whether the town purchases 288 acres of open space known as Meadowwood. And you can learn more about that proposal on the town's website, under news and announcements, you'll see a recent post where we share some information about that proposed acquisition. If you need an absentee ballot, you can download and print the request form from the Secretary of State's website. Again, I'll be linking to that in the report that's emailed out. Absentee ballots are mailed out by Town Hall, by Simsbury's Town Clerk. There is a tight timeframe to get these turned around. So if you are requesting an absentee ballot, I do recommend that you request that. You drop off that request form at Town Hall rather than mailing it in. The absentee ballot drop box has been placed outside the building where those forms and of course, the completed ballots can be dropped off. Spirit Council's Let's Talk series, so May is National Asian American Heritage Month. And on Thursday, May 6th, the Spirit Council is hosting a panel discussion from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. There'll be five speakers, including Connecticut's Attorney General, William Tong. Registration for that virtual program is on the library's website. As we swing into spring and walkers and bikers become more frequent on our roads, safety awareness becomes important. The Simsbury Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee is offering a virtual presentation, May 6th, to assist drivers, pedestrians, bicycles and motor vehicles. How do we all share the road? And you can sign up for that presentation through the Simsbury Senior Center. Also, May is National Bike Month and Simsbury will join communities around the country in hosting activities designed to promote biking and bike safety. Simsbury's Bike Month calendar includes bike and walk to school events, bike to work events, bicycle maintenance class and, and other events. And you can see that full calendar at simsbury.bike. Coming up in a couple of weeks, the Simsbury Grange is hosting an electronic recycling event on Saturday, May 8th, from nine to noon. That'll be held at the Old Well Tavern. A $10 donation is suggested. Let me turn it over now to Maria for the town manager's report.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Good evening. So just leading off with an update on our pandemic response. We continue to monitor the state's COVID alert system for municipalities. We are currently at yellow status, which was really good to see. We haven't been there in quite some time. So yellow status indicates that we have more than five cases, but less than 10 cases per 100,000 residents. Our positive cases for the two week period ending April 17th with 8.6 cases per 100,000 residents. That was a decrease from 12.6 cases on April 10th. And our positivity rate for those being tested is down to 2.3%, which is a decrease from 3% the week prior. In regards to sort of, you know, looking at our, at our state, if you check out the, the color coded map, most of Connecticut is still at the red alert status. There are a small number of communities that are essentially in the clear status as well as the yellow status, which is where at, and some in orange. But again, the majority of folks are still seeing numbers in the red status. So I think that's a testament you know, to the fact that we're seeing our community members, you know, take, take care and caution. We're currently at 30 positive cases over the most two week, most recent two week period, which is a decrease from 44 cases the prior two week period. Preliminary data that we have regarding vaccinations for April 14th is that we have just under 15,600 Simsbury residents who have received at least their first dose of the vaccine. That's about 61% of our population. At this point in time, the Department of Public Health had underestimated the total number of residents we had living in our community age 65 and older. So at this point in time, the percentages that they're providing for a number of residents in those age categories who have been vaccinated are in fact exceeding 100% at this point. In terms of our workforce for the month of April, we've had five staff members quarantined as well as two staff member positive cases. So again, largely remaining healthy, but at times we've continued to have some small pockets of staffing shortages as a result. In regards to our current walk-in hours, I'm pleased to tentatively announce that we will be, our most likely reopening Town Hall and the library in Eno on June 1st for our pre-COVID walk-in hours for our visitors. So we are working through the planning stages for that now. You know, for events, you know, programs, gatherings, for those sorts of things, we'll be continuing to phase things in a little more gradually throughout the summer. We're going to be getting more guidance around events and gatherings and things of that nature. But for our walk-in hours, again, we're very optimistic that if we continue seeing the trends that we're seeing, that we'll be able to reopen to sort of more normal hours as of June 1st, which is, which is really great news. I'm very happy to share that. Another update that I think is just relevant for folks to be aware of is that we are going to be continuing to hold our meetings virtually through about May 20th. At that point in time, the executive orders around our various virtual meetings, whether it's hybrid, remote, et cetera, will be ceasing. The state is currently considering legislation around municipalities being able to continue to do that into the future. And then at a staff level though, as we're going to be returning to in-person meetings, we're currently researching some different methods that will help us to be able to sort of utilize the technology while also being in an in-person setting. So we're just working through some of that and hope to have some solutions for you in, in the near future. Also, just quickly, want to share that our social services department has continued to see an increased need in terms of our food program. But we are starting to see that come down a little bit more to normal again. So in our most recent cheese day program, we assisted 98 households and included 27 homebound deliveries and 19 kid friendly bags that were provided. At the height of the pandemic, we were helping about 140 households a month, which was a 75% increase in, in our normal level of participants. And again, we've seen those numbers come down a bit, but it's still about a 25% increase compared to our pre-COVID levels. Just under Board of Selectmen business, wanted to share with you all that the registrars reported, we had 62 voters and electors check in and attend the Meadowwood Special Child Meeting that was held this Saturday. We also had a small number of staff and guests that were in attendance as well. And from my perspective, I think the meeting went incredibly smoothly, considering we have And from my perspective, I think the meeting went incredibly smoothly, um considering we haven't had one in nearly a decade. Um I just want to thank all of you for your tide and and energy, but also wanted to just quickly um acknowledge some of our folks that really helped make the event go so well. So many thanks to our town attorney, Bob T. Crescendo, Melissa Appleby, Tom Fitzgerald, Erica Butler, Tom Tiberski, Orlando Cassiano, Tom Roy, Eric Davis, Cisalina, Karen Cortez, and all of our staff members that came out to help on the day of the event. I really just wanted to express my deepest gratitude. Um I couldn't have been more pleased with that uh the outcome of of how that whole whole process and meeting went. A few department news and notes from engineering. Um you might recall that Aquarian is working on cleaning some water mains throughout town. Um there is one remaining date left on April twenty seventh that's going to occur overnight between ten P M and eight A M. Um the impacted areas are Bradley Road, East Weetalk Street, Heather Lane, Pinnacle Mountain Road, Terry's Plain Road, and Riverside Road. Um there may be some water discoloration or loss in water pressure during that time period. And there's more information in the manager's report, as well as a phone number uh for folks to contact at Aquarian with any questions. And then uh earlier this evening, um our Aquarian uh colleagues did present on on the project that they're working on. Um so there will be a small section of the Farmington River Trail um that will be closed during the weekdays only um from today, April twenty-sixth to Friday, June fourth. Um it will be open again on uh the weekends, as well as Memorial Day. We've also provided contact information for anybody that might be concerned about that. And some good news to share from our library. For the third time in four years, the Simsbury Public Library has won Connecticut Library Association's Excellence in Public Library Service Award. Um this year's award was in recognition of the work that the library has been doing in partnership with Spirit Council. Um and in particular, they recognize the work of our library and Lindsay Neffinger. So uh many thanks to Lindsay and the library um for the good work that they're doing with our Spirit Council. On April twelfth, the three hundred and fiftieth Anniversary Committee uh was pleased to dedicate a painting that was commissioned to to commemorate the very special anniversary uh that we just had. It was created by local artist Michael Grady uh and donated to the town, you may recall, by the Wellman family. Um it's now hanging at the library and S C T V came and did uh a recording for us of the dedication ceremony. So we've provided a link to that video for folks. Um the library has relaunched its thousand books before kindergarten program. Um this is uh one of our staff members uh who is currently um pursuing a master's in library science degree. Um she is uh working on this project as part of her practicum. Um it's it's a really neat program. We've got information and a link for uh people who might be interested in signing up for that. And Mary Richardson will be joining our staff as our new teen services librarian. Um this is a position that was vacant. Um and we uh really searched long and and hard for a great replacement. Um really enthusiastic about Mary coming on board. She received her undergraduate degree uh from the University of Georgia and her master's in library science degree from Kent State University. Um she's most recently served as a teen and adult services librarian uh at a public library in Colchester. She's Chair of the Library Connect uh Connection User Experience Committee, a member of the Nutmeg Book Selection Committee, and she's presented at many professional conferences. Uh additionally, in her role at her current library, she's collaborated with Colchester Youth and Social Services um on a middle school gay straight alliance um group to give the LGBTQ and questioning teens a safe space to talk about and explore issues and identities. So she just has a fantastic background and really, like it's enthusiastic about Mary joining our team on on May tenth. So congratulations in both of them. From Public Works, uh the town of Simsbury participated in the recent Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event. Um that one was held at the Farmington High School. And we don't have final numbers yet, but attendance was strong, and we had a higher-than-normal amount of electronics recycling that occurred. Um you may recall that we do have another one coming up here in Simsbury on June fourteen. So, excuse me, June twelfth. So we do have information included on that in the report. Uh also from Public Works, we're welcoming two new folks to the um W P C A. That is our um sewer treatment facility. Uh Blake Bowles recently started as a plant operator one. Um he comes to us after having uh worked and lived in Virginia, um but on the public water services side of the house. Um so he is currently, um yeah, he has started and he is now working on obtaining his uh waterworks oper- excuse me, his um wastewater operator certification. And we also have Dennis Bertrand, who is also starting as a plant operator one. Um he is a graduate of Howell Chaney Technical High School in Manchester, and he is a water support technician in the United States Marine Corps Reserve. So congratulations to both Dennis and Blake. Again, very happy to have them on board. And lastly, just a quick reminder from Social Services, uh the Renters Review Program is opening up on June first. Details are in the report. And our blood pressure and blood sugar screenings and hearing clinics are going to be resuming at Eno, and details on those are attached. Great, thank you.
Lot going on.
Yes.
Thanks. Uh selectman action, uh item A. Is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to accept a donation from Saint Matthew Lutheran Church in the amount of two thousand dollars for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department's food programs?
I'll make a motion with our thanks. I'll second with our thanks.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You, that was a a four, right, Shav? You came through a little, you came through delayed on me. Uh you're in favor, right? Okay, it's checking.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah, no, you don't vote against church donations, no.
That's what I figured. You just came through on a delay.
I voted for it with my thanks, yes.
Your thanks.
All right, I'm in the south end of town. The internet's lousy down here.
All right, that passes. There's a little more drama over item A than I anticipated. Um item B, um uh proposed revisions to the um juvenile reviewed board procedures. So this is a small update to the procedures. Um and Maria, I'm hoping you could just provide a brief uh summary of the proposed change and how this came about.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is a very um very minor change, um and it came at the recommendation of our town attorney. Um but we had a a notification uh issue pop up recently around a non-custodial parent. Um and so our current policies do a request that we provide notification to a parent or legal guardian. Um however, just for cleaning up the procedures, it should really say that we'll provide notice to a um legal um uh custodian, excuse me, a legal guardian um or custodial parent.
Were there any questions on this item? Is there a motion uh April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to approve the proposed changes to the juvenile review board procedures policy?
I'll move that.
Second.
Too slow, Wendy. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Uh I'm not for it, sorry.
Yeah. Uh this, item C is the uh fiscal year twenty twenty-two Historic Documents Preservation Grant. Um this is a grant that would support a project to digitize some of the town's older land records. And um this this, you know, grant, if we did receive it, um would um also require an additional financial commitment. So um just hoping Maria, you could uh just give a little summary of how this would be paid for.
Absolutely. So um this project, um we definitely found a need for it um throughout the pandemic. If we could go a little bit further into the land records, if you may recall, you know, we had quite a bit of development here in town in the sixties and to the early seventies. And our land records are currently only digitized to the early nineteen seventies. And so we'd like to, uh excuse me, until nineteen seventy-six. So we would like to go back a bit further. And the um grant program that is available from the state on an annual basis, we could use to fund um part of that project. We do anticipate it would fund about a third of the project. Um you may also recall that the town clerk's office does have a special revenue fund um account that is um essentially for them, set aside by state statute. And they can then use um those funds to do things like land uh land records preservation, um archiving project and and things of this nature. So we think that this would be a perfect use of some of those funds that have accumulated in that account over time. Um so it would be a combination of grant funds and um that special revenue account that's been set up. And those funds come to the special revenue account. There are um certain state fees that town clerks are required to collect um as part of their duties and responsibilities, and a small portion of those go back to to the account.
Were there, uh thanks for the summary, Maria. Were there questions on this item? Is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to submit the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Historic Documents Preservation Grant application? And authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to designate Erica L. Butler, Town Clerk, as the agent for making the above application? And further to uh accept the grant uh should it be awarded? And um authorize uh Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant award.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Uh tax refund requests, item D. Is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of two thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-one cents? And authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds.
Move that. Second it.
Second, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Um item E is a uh proposed rescission of uh the temporary prohibition of the acceptance of cash payments. So it's been about a year that the town has not been accepting uh cash. And as part of the effort uh to curb the spread of covid nineteen, we know a lot more now about how the virus spreads, and staff is now recommending that we return to accepting uh cash payments. Um Maria, is there anything else you would want to add to this item?
Yeah, just that, you know, long-term, I think um staff will most likely put together a proposal for for your consideration. Um we found for some of our departments, um while this temporary rescission was in place, um it actually created um a bit of an administrative ease for staff and created some efficiencies. Um and that perhaps, you know, maybe long-term, um we think about not accepting, you know, cash payments at a certain dollar threshold, you know, over, say, twenty-five dollars. Because sometimes there are just some very, you know, nominal transactions. We're still accepting cash. It's it's convenient. Um but it's definitely something we're talking about at at a department head level, um and would like to bring a more long-term suggestion or proposal forward to you in the future. Um but until we're ready to do so, um again, we do feel that it would be appropriate at this time to go back to normal and 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 accept cash payments.
Were there any questions? Is there a motion effective? Um Maria, is there a reason why this was um, would this be sort of retro uh in the future to May third? Is that?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we thought May third, just to start nice and clean at the start of the next month, and just to give folks a little bit of time to get notifications out.
Sure. Uh is there a motion effective on May third, twenty twenty-one, to rescind the temporary prohibition of accepting cash payments?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Um item F is, you know, there's a a proposal in the General Assembly that would eliminate uh the property tax on certain motor vehicles. And um speaking for myself, I'm not a particular fan of the car tax, but if if this were to occur, it would result in a eight-million-dollar hole in Simsbury's budget, um which would then put more pressure on on taxing homes. Um and we learned uh late last week that this proposal is likely losing traction, but there is a letter in your packets um made out to our representatives um in opposition um that we still could approve tonight if the board were supportive. Uh so I wanted to see if there was anywhere any questions or feedback on that letter.
I just want to clear, oh, sorry. I just wanted to clarify, it's it's not just on the property, the car tax, it's also on potentially bumping up, you know, or low, that we'd get less if they changed the assessment value that we're currently at seventy percent, correct?
Maria, is that something you, I can see?
Or so that was another part of the proposal, um that the solution to offset the revenue loss would be to change um from using our assessed value at seventy percent, that municipalities could choose to gradually move closer to a hundred percent or even go as high as a hundred, a hundred percent. Um where, you know, I was concerned from my my perspective about that proposal compared to a past past proposal, is that you're simply shifting the property tax burden from one property tax to another property tax. Um whereas I would think it was the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen timeframe, a similar proposal has started to gain a little traction. And the state's solution was, oh, we'll either, you know, do away with the car tax, or we'll have a lower, you know, uniform mill rate. We'll supplement that with sending the state's a portion of the sales tax, right, which is not a regressive form of taxation. So um I think, you know, the earlier iteration of that many years ago, you know, probably had um a lot more um sense to it. Um but this particular one, I really struggled with because not only would we be losing eight million in revenue, we would, in order to make up for that, our only option would be to shift it to another source of property tax. Um so that's kind of where where my concern was on that.
Yep.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that prior proposal failed miserably because the state wasn't able to figure out the calculation to make the town's whole, so that that died, right? So.
Yeah, I think it's like one payment, and then it.
Yeah. Well, like, like, like we said at the time, there's no way, I mean, the state can barely manage itself to begin with, and adding another thing, i- it makes no sense. So, yeah, I, you know, this, you you heard me ten years in a row, Mike, right, and others. I mean, we need to, if we're gonna look at at fixing the problem, we have to look at at other ways um to raise revenues in 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 local municipalities. And right now, all we've got is property tax, both on cars and and houses. And and I get the need at the state level, you're trying to help working families and otherwise by by eliminating the car tax. I I don't disagree with the premise, but the problem is, is you're just shifting the burden from one hand to the other. So this, this is not an intelligent solution. It's just, it's just shuffling the deck chairs on the Titanic again, so.
Well, like Eric said, we're not going to be able to save our residents any money.
No. And in fact, it will cost certain residents more money. Um while others, you know, again, will benefit from it, because if they don't own a house, they they won't pay car tax anymore. I'm in support of signing a letter.
I'll um read the motion. Is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to send the attached letter to the Joint Committee on Finances, Revenue, and Bonding? Representative John Hampton and Senator Kevin Whitcos outlining Simsbury's opposition to raise bill number eleven oh five, an act eliminating the property tax on certain motor vehicles and adjusting the uniform property assessment rate.
Move that.
Second.
Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Um item G is a proposed license agreement for a storage shed at Simsbury Farms for the Simsbury Youth Hockey Association. Um this would be um at the hockey association's uh own expense. And I see, uh Tom Tiberski, um you're with us. Uh where would the shed be located?
Out of the way location up where the two are now located by the ropes course. Uh it actually be tucked behind them.
Hey, hey, Tom, I'm having trouble hearing you. You're coming through real quiet.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, much better.
Sorry about that. Um it's gonna, it's gonna be in an out-of-way, out-of-the-way location up by the ropes course where the two other storage sheds are located right now. Uh we currently have one up there for the course and one that's used by Special Olympics uh for their equipment. So we're gonna tuck, the idea is to tuck this one in right behind them.
Were there any questions for Tom? Okay. Is there a motion effective uh April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the proposed license agreement with the Simsbury Youth Hockey Association?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. And item H, staying at the farms, is a golf cart lease agreement. This is a proposed five-year uh agreement with uh John Verengia, who is the golf pro at the farms. The terms of the lease would be the same as the previous lease, so forty-five carts for uh just under forty-seven thousand dollars a year. Um Tom, anything you wanted to add on this item?
Now, this this agreement, for those of you who have been around a while, this agreement's been in place and basically renewed every every five years. Um it's a good agreement for us that to own these carts and maintain them would be a significant burden on our budget. Uh John's been great, and we've had no complaints um that I'm aware of over the over the his history with us regarding the condition of our golf, of the golf courts at Simsbury Farms. So I I hope you'll you will agree to this.
Any, any questions for Tom? Okay, is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the proposed golf cart lease agreement between the town of Simsbury and John Verengia?
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So the next set of items are uh public gathering permits. And what I'll do is um read the motion, and then if there's any questions, we could have that conversation at that time. Um so this is item I. Is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to approve the public gathering application on behalf of the Simsbury Performing Arts Center? Um and to uh authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit uh for the Connerd High School concert?
I'll move that. Second.
Is there anything that anyone wanted to add or any questions on this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item J, is there an uh uh a motion effective uh April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one to approve the public gathering application on behalf of the Simsbury Performing Arts Center and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the Simsbury High School concert? This would be. This would be May nineteenth.
I'll move that.
Was there anything anyone wanted to add or any questions on this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Now, item K, is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one to approve the public gathering application on behalf of the Simsbury Performing Arts Center and authorize the issuance of public gathering permit for Riley's dance recital?
I'll move that.
Second it.
Is there any further conversation?
I'm impressed Riley can pull off five hundred to a thousand people for a dance recital. That's pretty good.
Nice.
That was funny.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Item L, is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one to approve the public gathering application on behalf of the Simsbury Performing Arts Center and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the Rue Cajun Eatery Concert?
I'll move that.
I'll second it. We're slowing down here.
I know.
I'm on mute. Nobody laughed at my joke, so I'm done.
We did laugh. We were on mute, though.
Any further conversation on this item? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. Item M, is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one to approve the public gathering application on behalf of the Simsbury Performing Arts Center and authorize the issuance of public gathering permit for the Farmington Valley Dance and Music Recital?
So moved.
Second.
I think, I think I heard Mike there just a tad earlier. Is there any questions or conversation on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Item N, is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one to approve the public gathering application on behalf of the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center? And authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the Memorial Day Ceremony in celebration?
Move that.
Second.
Second.
I heard Mike. Is there any further conversation or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I just want to say, I think that's the end of the Performing Arts Center. Missy, thank you for staying with us. It's lovely to see you.
You got it.
A lot going on this spring already, and I'm really proud of the work that your team's doing, you and your team are doing down there.
Thanks so much.
Yeah. Okay, item, I don't want to miss one, just being careful, yeah. Item O, this is a, a public gathering application for a park dedication at Hopbrook Landing by the Flower Bridge. Is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one to approve the public gathering application on behalf of the Simsbury Parks and Recreation? And authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the Simsbury Three-Fiftieth Hopbrook Landing Park Dedication?
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item P, is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one to approve the public gathering application on behalf of the Simsbury Parks and Recreation? And authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the Shapiro Wedding?
I'll move that, and I wish I could go to it. It looks like it would be nice.
Seems lovely. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Were there any questions or conversation on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and item Q is similar. Is there a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one to approve the public gathering application on behalf of Simsbury Parks and Rec? And authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the Lopresti Wedding?
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Any questions or conversation on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Finally, item R, staff is proposing a change to the ordinance that covers our town's historic district commission. Currently, two regular members of the commission and one alternate member need to live within the historic district. And this has had the effect of making this committee a particularly challenging one to fill. The proposed change, or I should say, one of the proposed changes would reduce residency requirement to just one member needing to live in a district. I want to see, I don't know if, if this is something that Tom would talk to or Maria? Maria?
Yeah, I can start off and then let's see if Tom wants to add anything. But, um, yeah, so I think probably the one substantive change that's most important to know, as Eric mentioned, was again, the difficulty with quorum. And state statute is actually less restrictive than the way our current ordinance is written in regards to a membership and folks needing to reside in the district. So that was, you know, one potential change that we thought could, could have a positive impact. But the actual ordinance is several decades old now, and we've since developed a number of other ordinances in town, for example, our gift ordinance, et cetera. And so our parts of our current ordinance don't necessarily jive with later ordinances that were adopted or other policies that you've, you've adopted more recently. So it's largely housekeeping in nature and just trying to help bring that ordinance current. But again, I think also just noting that potential change for, for making it a bit easier to obtain members for the commission. And then also just maintaining quorums. And I don't know, Tom, if you had anything else that you thought was important to add to that?
Um, while I don't staff the HTC, staffing is always an issue with commissions. It's a volunteer job, and it takes time and effort out of the residents. And coming in alignment with state statutes always a positive on our land use commissions. And so I would be happy to answer when I can, but I believe that that's a positive for the town in order to facilitate some rulings from the HTC. They are advisory, they just give certificates of appropriateness. This is not a legal board.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Eric, if I can jump in, I'm liaison to that commission, and it has been a challenge to both find people to serve on that group, but also for them to get quorums. So I think these changes will definitely help that process. Tom's absolutely right. Tom and Maria are right.
Thanks, Mike. I couldn't see Wendy. Did you use your hand up? Were you going to jump in? Oh, okay, any other questions? Okay, let me find the motion. So a motion effective April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one to set a public hearing to receive public comment concerning proposed revisions to chapter twenty-five of the town code concerning the historic district commission for six PM on Monday, May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. From the minutes of our, we had two meetings, a regular meeting on April seventh and a special meeting on April fourteenth. How the, the minutes look, any changes? Okay. Were there any selectmen liaison and subcommittee reports?
I, I don't have a subcommittee report. There is a Board of Ed meeting tomorrow. There was, the last one was canceled. This one's being held live at Tooton Hills. Since I'm vaccinated, I plan to go. I did want to just bring up, and I sent Maria and Eric and Sean an email about potentially having an agenda item when we have the full set of information on the American Rescue Plan. So we can present that to the residents and talk about what our process is going to be and how we're going to implement that. And if we want input from different boards and commissions.
Yeah, thanks, Wendy. Were there any other liaison reports? Okay. Anything under communication that anyone wanted to highlight? It's exciting to see the paving schedule. Good, okay, and I wasn't, I wasn't sarcastic. I mean, I'm genuinely, I always like seeing.
No, 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 you didn't laugh at my joke. I'm not laughing at yours.